I want one of these for home, but I can't afford one of these.
My wife has one she loves.
Oh, I love this hair, but I couldn't afford it at home. At least not right now.
Okay. You're streaming.
Okay. Okay. Let me mute it so we're not.
Hi Paul.
Hey Bill, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hi Johnny.
Hi Fred, how are you?
Okay. Just peachy.
How's the weather out that way?
It's snowing like crazy. We've got about a half a foot.
All right, bring it on.
Hi guys.
Hi Linda.
Hi Linda.
How are we doing? I'm just trying something here. Just a minute. I'm trying to figure out my lighting. It looks terrible. No, my lighting hon, I'm like really dark. Hold on guys.
Here's the mastermind of our fire department.
Hi Tim.
Hi, good evening everybody.
Hi Tim.
Thanks Fred. Chris, Paul, Mayor.
Not sure if the mayor's beamed in yet.
How's everybody?
Good.
Had an interesting morning on the way to work today. It was a little bit of everything. Sleet, hail, snow. It was a kind of a treacherous drive at eight o'clock.
Yeah, they said it was gonna be freezing rain.
Hell, it was.
Nice move, Dolly Ann.
You're right. I like the food up there, that's for sure.
How's David?
Good, how you doing Bill?
Good.
I just bought this laptop a year ago and it took me 20 minutes to get logged on. I don't know if something's wrong with it or not. I'm not too computer savvy.
My girlfriend.
Aw. She's a cutie. I made Gizmo stay out with dad. Where is everybody?
Oh, they'll be coming.
Mary Ann is in North Carolina with my oldest daughter and I thought this would be an opportune time tomorrow when I get our stimulus to head down to the casino and, you know, put it to good use.
Make a donation?
I haven't been there in a year and a half, but I don't miss it at all.
Okay, I can't remember the last time Gil and I were there. He limits us to $20 apiece. And when we're done, we're done.
That's a good move.
It must take two minutes.
Yes.
Actually, a couple of times he's gotten, he's gotten lucky and then he says we're leaving.
That's why we don't go anymore because you can go through $20 or $40 in five minutes.
Yep. Hi Carrie.
Hi. Good evening everyone.
Good evening. Carrie, I have Daisy here.
Oh, where is she? Oh, that's so lovely. I have the boys here too.
Carrie, I just told her. Carrie, I told everybody that Mary Ann's in North Carolina with my oldest daughter, so I'm gonna take our stimulus money that's arriving tomorrow and head for the casino.
Well, we gotta share. That's cool.
You can share in my losses.
Good evening.
Good evening Vernon.
Hi Vern. Daisy, no growling.
Are you talking to the mayor or the dog? I just figured out you Bill. Vernon, do you wanna do public safety first because finance is gonna go for a while?
I'm sorry Linda, were you talking to me? I hit the wrong mute button here.
That's okay. Now, I just asked if you wanna do public safety first because finance will probably go for a while.
Sure.
Hi John.
Hi Linda.
We waiting on Jason or we just waiting on Jason, right?
Yes. I didn't see him yet.
About our bunnies Paul.
Great game.
They played real well.
Some of these dog squeaky toys got my dog running all over looking for it.
Be me.
Alright, are we starting without Jason or?
It's past 5:30.
Those Marines are punctual.
Hey Fred, while we have some time, so that ban that you sent us information on earlier, do we, we re-ban every year, is that correct?
Yeah, they did this one earlier to accommodate the request for, from Bob for the Washington Street project. We will get together with them in, well, as soon as June or earlier than June to discuss some refinancing and maybe when we get into the capital projects, some ideas of banning, especially at that rate, it's it's unbelievable. We're gonna borrow $3 million and pay $10,600 in interest for a year. That's, that's incredible. So, we can talk about that in the finance discussion.
Okay. I would, I would suggest go ahead and get started Vernon. I sent him a message and I haven't heard back.
Okay. Alright, I wanna call to order Public Safety Committee for March 16, 2021. Let the record show, all committee members are present with the exception of Alderman, Panis. Need to approve the previous minutes for December 15, 2020. Need a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's see, unfinished business, we have none. And new referrals for consideration, we have discussion of pedestrian safety enhancement project grant agreement, Director Ring.
Yeah, this is pretty standard procedure for, this is a guilty led project pedestrian safety action plan. We're ready to pretty much sign the final documents with the state approving the design moving forward with the project. They require a resolution which would be on next week. We thought it'd be a good idea to have it on for discussion in case there were any questions, but like I said, it's pretty standard. This resolution allocates the construction and the funding for the construction section required for the project. That funding is all laid out in the resolution, but we're about ready to go to advertisement and bid on the pedestrian safety action plan project. Questions?
Bob, just as a refresher, is this the the projects to address like five intersections?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, so I guess we don't, you know. So we don't need to refer this to the committee of the whole, since there's a PL, it's gonna be created?
There'll be a PL on for next week's meeting.
Okay. So next on discussion was no parking here at a corner, Maple Street at his intersection with Root Street. That would be Alderman Anastasia. Yeah, Vern, thank you. I sent an email to Bob and both of the chiefs to go down Maple Street at the intersection of Root Street is very narrow. Probably one of the narrow streets in Olean, and if you drive down there anytime after five o'clock, you're hard pressed to even get your car through there, let alone have a fire truck or an ambulance try to get through there. And at the corner there, there's a fire hydrant and the person that lives there is running the property, I guess, and they have a driveway on Root Street. But for some reason, they're always parking their vehicles close to the intersection of the corner of Root and Maple, making it very hard for cars to swing around the corner. Plus the one resident that has the first driveway, it has a Chevy pickup truck to even back out of her driveway without driving onto the subway. So I thought the easiest way to remedy the problem, instead of putting no parking on one side all the way down the street, is just to start with a no parking here at a corner. And I had both, both of the chiefs go down there and look at the situation and they both agreed that they're in favor of the no parking here at a corner because for one of the fire hydrant and then very narrow street. So what I'd like to do is put a PL in for next Tuesday and put a resolution in and have this voted on to satisfy some of the neighbors in that area. Okay. Any questions out there?
Hey Dave, I've got a couple, just a question as far as, have you talked to the residents that this would directly impact?
No, I have not because like I said, it's a rental property and if it impacts them, it's tough luck because they have a driveway on Root Street that they do not use. They just park at Maple Street instead.
Okay.
And then Dave, I have a question. The, as far as the parking space, just going from that picture, is the parking, no parking from there to the stop sign, is that in conjunction to the normal space that you can't park prior to a stop sign or? What I would like to suggest is that we go from the sidewalk. I don't know how they measure it, if they measure it from the middle of the street in the intersection, I don't know how, how the engineers do that, but I like to go back from the corner where the, where the fire hydrant is, at least 18, 20 feet. Two car lengths. Yep. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this topic? So, the PL will be created next week, so we don't need to do anything as far as voting, just move on from there. Yeah, Tiffany's listening. I just wondered if she would put the PL in for me.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. So we have the approval of committee minutes or committee. Uh, let me see if there is any, there is none. Any other questions or comments while we're in public safety? Anything from the mayor?
No, good to go. Thank you.
Can I, Vernon, I'm sorry to, not trying to interrupt, but just for clarification or an update. Bill, would you it, when, when do you foresee the council having to vote on the, what you're gonna send the governor? You sent us out kind of an outline as far as the expect, the expectations or the outcomes, the recommendations of the police reform?
Yes.
Is that, is that gonna be on for next week?
For the 23rd for a vote, yes.
Okay, so is that just essentially what you emailed all of us?
Yeah, we're meeting Thursday night. There wasn't not of, the only, most of the comments were directed at a police review committee. So it's pretty much intact. What will be presented to the, that document will be presented to the common council. And, and as you notice, most of their all suggestions to the common council. So if we, we adopt that, the common council votes to the affirmative on that document, that'll go into the state. That'll satisfy our requirements with the state and as for the one remaining item on that, the police reform board, it's gonna be a recommendation that it is in there that the, this committee stays on to hash out the finer details of it and then bring that forward to the council.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure if this is gonna come forward for us to vote on it next Tuesday, if, you know, any of the council members had any comments or questions to make sure to, you know, reach out to Bill or any of the, I guess, the committee members or the police chief, whoever I, I don't, I don't, are you the chair of it Bill? Who's, who's the point of contact? You?
I, I wouldn't say, yeah, I guess on the point of contact, yep.
Okay, so if there are any questions, you know, reach out to the mayor before next Tuesday because that'll be on the agenda.
Tiffany, could you re-mail that to me, the kind of the recommendations that you want the council to approve? I don't remember seeing that in email. I might have accidentally deleted it.
Yep, I'll, I'll reset that. Well, after tomorrow night's meeting with the, with the board or the committee, and I'll reset it. If I can reset it in the morning to you too Dave, so.
It's Thursday night meeting, right?
Oh yes, I'm a day off. Turned the clocks ahead a day and I lost an hour, turned the clocks ahead an hour and I lost a day, so.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you John for bringing that up. There is nothing else, then I guess I'm making motion adjourned. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it, no nays. I get to go meet.
Okay, I don't see Jason yet, so, but we're gonna get started on finance. So I'll call to order the committee of finance for March 16th and let the record show, all members are present, except Alderman Panis. Financing bills, did anybody have any questions on our monthly bills or finance? Seeing none, okay. Unfinished business. Basically the budget. New referrals for consideration, discussion of the budget for 2021, 22. And we'll start with capital projects. So I'll hand this over to Bob Ring.
You want me to start Mayor?
You or Fred?
You want to?
Yeah.
You want Fred?
No, it's, it's who's gonna put the sheet up on the, on the Fred, why don't you, why don't you go ahead and Bob can talk about.
Okay, I, I
I actually have, excuse me one minute. I actually have, I think we have most of the department heads here who have requested capital projects so they can answer questions if you have them. So Fred, go ahead and preface everything and then we can go from there.
Okay, do you see my list? I
No.
No?
Sharon it?
Yeah, I, well, let's, I have it on my screen, so. Oh shoot. Oh, let's see. I have screen share. I don't have the
You have the green, you have the green line around?
I have, I have that, that's all I have. Not seeing the, the border and all that other nice stuff. So, Bob, do you have that?
Yeah, I can share my screen.
Okay, sorry Bill.
Remedial tomorrow Fred.
There we go. Uh, I received this list over the last two or three weeks from our department heads. And it's a list of items that we would like to bring to your attention and I separated them between those items that we have talked about potentially bonding for and some other smaller items. There, there was a late addition from Bob Ring for brickwork done on various streets and also a late addition for $50,000 for the Fornus Park project. There's a variety of things. Greg, are you there?
Greg's not here.
Okay, Greg, there's $50,000 in our reserve. Capital project reserve fund for a future revale. It's gonna cost a whole lot more than $50,000. Whenever we decide to do a total revale. Greg would like to see the council ponder adding to that $50,000 reserve. Again, I'm not here to talk about it, but it's something that Again, I'm not here to talk about it, but it's something that needs our attention down the road. Tim, would you like to talk about your request of thirty-six thousand and thirty-seven thousand two hundred?
Could I interrupt just for a second, Fred, please? Hey, hey, Bill, could you, at, at, at some point in time, could, I wish, could Greg speak to and do a presentation on, on what that entails and what the benefits of a revaluation would, would bring to us?
Yes, yes, we can, we can, we can do that, yes.
And so, I don't know, I guess sooner rather than later, even if he wants to send us an email, I mean, if we're going to start looking at setting aside additional monies for it, I, I think it would be beneficial for us to know what that benefit is.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You know, I was just about to ask the same thing because I have no idea what, what that is, so I'd like an explanation on that one as well.
Okay, on to Tim.
Hi, good evening, everybody. The, the thirty-six thousand for the parking lot fence generator pad for Station One. Basically, that was what the original, the original plan was as far as that capital project. We'd taken the house down out back in the hopes of building a parking lot. We did have, the city electrician came by with the service contractor for our generators. And our generator, Fire Station One needs replaced sooner than later. So that, which actually is the same price as what is, what is displayed here. That parking lot fencing area, that can certainly be kicked to next year's, you know, next year's capital project. But the main thing is the generator, generator pad at Station One. That definitely needs to be addressed. What happens with that generator is, is that in the event we lose power, the generator kicks on, Fire Station One holds all our communications. So if that generator goes down, we've lost the ability to communicate. It has our, it runs our antennas, our repeaters. Also, it's, it's, it's the backup municipal building, if that ever becomes an issue. So, you know, that's something that, that we'll have to address. The, the concrete apron repairs of both fire stations. Bob and I have been talking about this because there is some impact where we could take care of Central first this year. And then we could take care of Station One the following year. But this would fix and repair the, the concrete aprons is, is what that is. Central has a front and rear and Fire Station One has it just a front. So those are, those are those two capital projects. But, you know, if I were to categorize the, of, in order of importance, the, the generator replacement out of these two projects would be the most significant impact for us.
Tim, do you have a price on the generator?
Yeah, it's thirty-six thousand. It's, that's why I left it in there because it's the exact same price as we quoted for the, like, the rear parking lot. And Bob and I are working together on a few different things to, to kind of maximize our, our working together. And as far as like the parking lot, just, you know, definitely millings and drainage this year, which, which necessarily wouldn't be capital project worthy, but prep it and do it in stages. Instead of just doing it all at once, just because of the generator. That was something that's been, we've been watching, but now it's the, you know, kind of unnoticed thing.
And Chief, what size generator is that?
Actually, there's, what's going on right now is National or NICEAG has to come in and do a gas pressure test to determine if we can utilize natural gas to supply it or if we have to go to diesel fuel. That's going to impact the price either way. They are supposed to be in the latter half of this week and next week to do the gas pressure test for us. Once that happens, then the city electrician can go out and start putting a bid packet together.
So what size is the current one, then?
Ah, geez, I would have to, I would have to look, to be honest with you, Vernon.
Okay.
It's an old Onan generator and it's, it's, it's a, it's a monster.
Yeah, I remember they had numbers to them.
Yeah, how many kilowatts that they, that they do. Yeah, I can get that for you, though.
Okay.
Do you, I, would you like, Linda, would you like me to address the fire truck now or wait till we get down to that point?
How about if we do the vehicles all together?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, any other questions? Thank you.
Bob Ring?
Jump in and stay with fire, especially if Tim has any comments. But I've been working on the Central Fire HVAC project. We have so forty-five thousand set aside for this project already. And we worked to try and bid the project and it didn't really go well. We tried to do kind of a design build and there were too many questions for us to handle. So we had reached out for some consultant help. And Clark Patterson Lee Engineering Firm put together a scope of work and they broke down an estimated, a lot of the work that needs to be done over there to do a comprehensive upgrade. And I guess what I'm proposing today is move forward with the proposal with Clark Patterson Lee. Their, their speed would be sixteen thousand to come up with a engineered, you know, mechanically strong design upgrade, not upgrade, but just to make sense, boiler upgrade, which is sorely needed because it's thirty-plus years old. You know, out of that forty-five thousand that we have, we would take sixteen thousand and we would get a full design. And then we would decide, you know, we would either bid that project out, breaking it into sort of three categories, which is the over the right, the main boiler, which they're estimating fifty-three to eighty thousand. And then the equipment bay, which is where the ambulances are, and essentially the garage bays is a separate part of the project and there's heaters in the ceiling that really could use an upgrade and replacement. And, you know, we can bid that separately. And then the remaining project cost is really the rest of the building, which is the offices and, and the, you know, the sleeping quarters and lockers and things like that. I'm sure you've heard stories about how one side is eighty degrees and the other side, you know, is, is sixty degrees. It's incredibly inconsistent in the way that it's heated and cooled. And, you know, we need some solutions for the. Clark Patterson Lee had some really good ideas when we walked through with them, just the zone actuation valves and thermostats on each heating unit that's in, ends of the building. Obviously, the, the west side of the building is usually the cold side because the wind is coming in from that side. And then the east end is hot because the sun is coming up and hitting that. And that's where the barracks are and sleeping quarters. And you get a really inconsistent temperature. But, so I guess I'm asking if we could move forward with the design and then bid this project and kind of keep in mind that, you know, we may need some more funding, some gap funding to at least replace the boiler and then perhaps move forward with these other purchases when we have a better idea of estimate.
Bob, can I have a question? The new area that they're building now, is that part of this or is that, they're putting that in place with the new addition?
Yeah, that's already being considered, you know, it's, it's a heated space and you know, it's already got existing heating, so that will be the lower area.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Linda. In, in here, as I'm looking at the total of this capital project request, I noticed that the central fire air amounts are not included in that, in that total there. Is that supposed to be included in that or was it because it ranged from thirty to a hundred K that it wasn't included? It was on the sheet that, the previous sheet that you had up.
Yeah, what, what wasn't included, the central air mounts? You mean the thirty to a hundred thousand? I guess I don't know what your question is.
On the capital projects request? On, on that sheet, it has on there, the total of the capital projects was five seventy-two-two. But when you add that up, it does not include your central fire HVAC amount.
Oh, I don't have an answer to that. Fred, did you prepare this or?
I did not prepare that sheet, but I did.
The previous sheet.
The previous sheet.
I see.
That one. So when you add up that top section there, the central fire HVAC, that thirty to a hundred K is not included in that five seventy-two-two. Is what I'm saying.
No.
We'll get that corrected.
So it's going to be a significantly higher number.
Just so you all know, the thirty to a hundred thousand, essentially, if you were to add thirty thousand to our original forty-five thousand, we would more than likely be able to replace the boiler only, but additional funds would allow for some of the other work expansion to take place.
So we'll have to, Fred, you'll have to update this to the, to the council using a figure for if it's thirty or if it's one hundred.
Yeah, I, I just went with the information that was given to me a couple of weeks ago. I, I'm just putting down what Bob requested some time ago.
So the sixteen thousand would come out of the forty-five you already have on hand for the Art Patterson and Lee design?
Correct, if we were to go with this strategy, he would just kind of move into the design phase and, and go from there.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Touching on Brick Streets quickly, this original cost, I believe, was about seventy-five to eighty thousand. And Alderman, Stacey and Alderman Whit had asked for pricing on River Street in New Glada. So I included that and we're about at a hundred thousand. If you want us to move forward with some brick upgrades, which we all know is, is pretty sorely needed. You know, this is a semi-annual thing that we've done. I haven't done any major brick street repairs since I've been here. I know it's done in the past on a semi-annual basis, but a hundred thousand would upgrade, you know, seven streets of the city.
Bob, do we, are we obligated to keep all these streets as brick paving?
No, but, you know, I, a lot of these streets are a hundred years old and they've had very little maintenance over the years. So I would encourage, you know, to leave brick streets. It's cheaper in the long run, it's more sustainable to have brick streets. I know this sounds like a big number, but that's the amount, it will spend resurfacing one blacktop street every twenty years. And they're uneven, yes, but you've got slower traffic on them. They're not always the most convenient, but I think they have a little bit of history and, like I said, they're very sustainable.
I mean, I was just curious, I, I don't disagree with anything you had to say. I would kind of be curious what some folks that live on those streets, you know, how they consider them. I know Sixth Street that runs up by Kevin Dougherty's house, you know, in the winter, that type of surface is pretty, pretty slick most of the time. And I understand the, having the previous paving and thing, hell, things help. And if it's cheaper and the folks like it, that's fine. I just wanted to know.
Okay. I don't believe we need a petition. I've asked that before, no, the attorneys are there. Want pretty good support from the neighborhood to pave over on that. Often, every street was brick for the most part. Every street that's over fifty years old was brick and was paved over.
Hey, Bob, as far as South Fifth Street goes, that is too far gone. The, the recommendation there is to overlay it. Does that, does that mean to blacktop it?
It really is, got complete failure of the base. You know, it's incredibly uneven. If you look at the driveways, and that's a big factor on Brick Streets, if you add pavement, often you have to replace the apron, which is expensive, five to ten thousand per apron. But on that street, I think we can overlay and not have to replace the aprons because they sit up a few inches. Like an easy fix after evaluating it.
So is that something that is it within your current budget? Because obviously there's no amount of money here. Is that something that is able to be addressed within your, your current CHIPS money or streets money or is, is that not?
Yeah, we would use our, we wouldn't use CHIPS funding, we'd use the two hundred and seventy chase maintenance budget. And the same thing with Seventeenth Street, we're actually going to do some extensive upgrades at the intersection with State Street. You can see that we're only spending eighteen ninety on a contractor, but we're going to pull out the brick for maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet and just pave that, that section because it's failed there. There's patches there. There's really only one driveway and it sits up high enough to basically do the same thing as Fifth.
Thank you.
The other three projects that, that I have on there are really projects that our planning team has put together and that support our efforts. You know, with, we have nine projects in construction this year and, you know, we have others in design. This funding would support those projects with, like I said, our efforts for downtown revitalization, our efforts for connectivity through trail networks and in, in making a land a recreation destination as well. So without spending too much time on each project. The South Union Street project, I've the council in, in a little bit before with a strategy to spend city funding on the design portion of the project where our engineering team and, and planning team would take on a great deal of the design funds. We had spoken in the past about East State Street, a smaller project, being a three hundred thousand dollar design fee. You know, if we're, if we funded out of our own funds, we can save maybe half that cost and, and I'll, you know, lead the design of the plan development. We may be able to do the inspection in-house, but we need this startup money to get the ball rolling with DOT, it's a state-owned road. And then the DRI funds that we have for the project, we would use just for construction. And I think that we can use the DRI funding to build this cross-section with a median and the trail, a side path along South Union Street all the way down to Franchot Park from Lincoln Park.
Hey, Bob, I have a question about that. I mean, I know you remember, I was on the local planning committee for the, for the DRI funding. And part of the, the whole caveat with, with these projects, like, for example, the South Union Street project, was that it was a hundred percent funded by the DRI money, so that it would be basically impervious to the whims of future councils' funding desires, right? We might not, you know, the, the whole thought was a future council might not want to pay for something like that, so let's secure all the funding right now for, you know, from the DRI. Is that not the case at this point?
Option, yeah, I mean, we, we could still use consulting funds for design. You know, it makes it a little bit more difficult, you know, using that process, but yes, we could, we could use that. When I'd estimated the project, it seemed logical to try and fund the design and save that money for construction so that, you know, to build the full scope of the project. When we borrowed for the projects a few weeks ago, East State Street and North Union Street project, you know, our plan was to roll this into that bond, but. in order to do that, you have to have a seeker and your design has to be further along. So we left it out and, you know, we're still seeking funding to get that ball rolling, but you know, I, I thought we'd had a plan in place, but again, I'm still seeking funding for that design. If you want to, you know, you have the option to just take that funding out of the, the grant.
So in other words, you, so I could try to understand what, what you're, uh, communicating. Um, we were hoping to be able to just leverage that, to save that towards the construction process, right?
That's right.
Okay. But to your point, Paul, uh, that's, that's how I remember the way it was drafted as well, was, you know, a hundred percent of the cost was covered.
Yep.
Yep. Um, Bob, how many more years do we have? Cause I, and it maybe I'm wrong, but the DRI money, was that for five years? So we're in what, to the third year?
Um, I don't know if we're in the second or third year. The goal is to build this project in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so it's twenty twenty-two for this project?
And then we have one, we have Oak Hill Park, which our goal is to build in twenty twenty-two. And then we have one other project. We have funding for West State Street.
And that's twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, now what about East State? Is that, um, coming up before or after this project?
Before.
Okay.
Our hope is to still get that project in construction in July. After, while these two is completed.
Okay, I just wanted to get those dates lined up in my head. Okay.
And I guess similarly with the Forness Park project, uh, this is a project we've been discussing for some time and, uh, that, you know, we're trying to, to plan out and, um, the design, you know, in-house. And we're asking for fifty thousand, um, as, as matching funds in, in order to leverage grant funding, um, which isn't in place, but that we think is available. And, you know, we would, we would hold on to that funding and, you know, Carrie can, you know, work her magic with grant applications, perhaps to the Ralph Wilson Foundation, um, you know, and other state agencies. While we determine estimating and, and design capabilities, like what we want here, you know, playground upgrades, more than likely field upgrades, like we had done on Fields Five and Seven back in two thousand seventeen. You know, a trail system that passes through the park, um, to connect it to downtown and, and increase that connectivity. Um, again, we, we think that fifty thousand would get us started on, you know, what could be, you know, two hundred, or sorry, two million dollar, you know, upgrade project, I guess, revitalization of Forness Park. You know, if you look at the playground equipment and the pavilions, our fences, the field conditions, um, you know, the pond with, with having, you know, a lot of, um, a lot of opportunity there, a lot of potential to, um, fix it, upgrade it and bring in tournaments and things like that. So.
Part of that, a part of that would also be, uh, lights on Fields Eight and Nine. Uh, that would be, and that's been requested by the softball groups. And that would satisfy a need over there. It would be upgrading of the softball fields, uh, you know, a, a, a trail around Forness Park. Uh, or I'm sorry, around the pond, uh, potentially, uh, funding is there. You got two hundred foot dock that people could walk out on and, and fish or sit and enjoy. And just a general upgrade of the, the whole park, uh, bringing, uh, you know, possibility of, uh, of, uh, uh, another restroom facility down here, Eight and Nine, uh, take away the, uh, uh, you know, the, the, uh, uh, walk all the way down to, uh, to Roland Avenue there and, uh, also take away some issues, uh, that I'm not going to mention that we usually get into. Uh, but there's a, you know, it's, it's a complete, uh, we feel that, uh, that the fifty thousand, uh, basically is that we would have for match money. Uh, like Bob said, could leverage us a couple of million dollars in a project there. So, uh, that's, that's, uh, that's what we're, uh, looking at right now. So the, the upgrades will be on, uh, Eight and Nine, the softball field's there. And, uh, Ten is a baseball field. We'd upgrade this under the park and, and, uh, you know, put in, uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, vision, just if you have a vision of around the pond, a nice walking, uh, trail around there with some picnic tables and, and, uh, and that, that, uh, uh, people could enjoy, uh, you know, that, uh, maybe if I'm coming from El Caz on their afternoon walk, they could do a nice walk around, around the park and, uh, you know, just things like that. It also could, with that upgrade there, it could also potentially, uh, uh, help with a, a new buyer for, uh, uh, well, we, it would take a while, but, you know, it'd enhance the condition of the, uh, of good times to, you know, as an attraction. So, but, uh,
Bill, would this, would this also include that parking lot that we're looking at? Remember a couple of years ago, we, it was on a list and we took it off to repave that? Would that be part of it?
The parking lot here in, uh, in Fort, yeah, that could be part of that too. And possibly a, an addition of a, uh, uh, a, uh, enhancing the parking lot in the outfield of, uh, of, uh, uh, Field Six, which is owned by Little League. Uh, that's our land and, and possibly looking at that, you know, for, uh, additional parking for, uh, uh, for people using, uh, the path around the pond and using the ponds. But there's a, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of good potential here. Uh, I think those of you who were on the council a couple of years ago, we were looking to put the, uh, put a trail coming off of East State Street and, uh, and coming around the park that way. And it would just be a nice added, uh, you know, with, with enough grant funding, it would be a nice added, uh, uh, venue for, uh, you know, and there again, we, we had the one presentation from the softball group, uh, from the women's softball group that, uh, you know, the fields need, uh, upgrading and, uh, they're, uh, you know, they, they, uh, uh, they could bring tournaments here, uh, which everybody likes tournaments because people spend money. So it's, uh, it's, it's a nice thing. And with the lighting that, uh, that'll, that, that takes care of, uh, of, uh, uh, you know, everything would be down in Forness, kind of away from everything, uh, you know, so we wouldn't get all, putting, I guess, uh, lighting back up. Uh, uh, Marcus is, is, you know, they've been gone from there and that's probably not a, a good thing to, to look at, putting lights back down there as the, uh, the neighborhood complains and that. But this will give us everything down in one facility and, uh, it could be just a nice, nice venue.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, from what I've heard, um, the ladies softball league is adding more teams this year. So we're going to have more people coming to town. So that's, that's a good thing.
Yes, yes, it is.
Can I ask a question about a separate project?
The what?
Bob, Bob, where are we at with the, um, where do you see the, uh, Franchot Park entrance project, uh, fitting into the priorities in terms of funding?
You mean off of Green Street or, or off of South Union?
Nope, off of Green Street.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't talked that much about it lately. I know we, as part of South Union Street project, we talked about upgrading this entrance to it, but, um, I know that project is one that we were going to do, you know, in-house more than anything.
Yeah.
If we could just kind of start putting it together and taking some trees down. It just kind of fell off the radar, Paul.
Yeah, I guess my, my point is I would, uh, re- rather than, you know, spend money on a project that is allegedly a hundred percent funded by the state, I'd rather see some of that money go to a project like that philosophically.
Um, Bob, can I? I guess I would, I was gonna ask as far as, and I, I understand how the grant funding works. Is this, is this similar to, and maybe Carrie could speak on this, um, when we set aside funding for, uh, King Street Park a couple of years ago in the budget, um, she was able to use that to go out to Ralph Wilson Stadium, I, or Ralph Wilson Foundation, I'm sorry. And, and that helped us secure the funding from them. Is it something like that where we have to make an effort to set that money in a capital fund? Maybe Carrie or, uh, could I speak to that?
Yeah, I was actually, um, just getting ready, um, to follow up from the mayor on that. Um, I can't really promise for a million dollars, but, um, this would allow us, it's similar, um, to what we did with King Street with Whitney Avenue. But King Street was the most helpful because we literally created a capital account and we set aside those funds and said, hey, here's our match. And that's how we were able to leverage it. And it's kind of similar, if we think back to the farmer's market, how the city had allocated X amount of dollars, then the county contributed. You know, we were able to apply to, uh, the state through the CFA process. Um, that, um, NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability has not come out yet. I had a E D T meeting this morning, Empire State Development said, hey, we're still in the middle of COVID. That should be forthcoming, but there could possibly be a round that we could use that fifty thousand dollars to leverage, you know? We could possibly go to Kaboom, the Ralph Wilson Foundation, we could go to New York State Parks, to Empire State Development. But it would be the best case scenario if it was allocated. So when I'm writing these applications, it truly shows the city's commitment with, with funding to move forward with the project, to try to leverage. And we could possibly piece all of those together like we've done on, um, other projects in the past.
Thank you. Um, yeah, that, I mean, that makes sense and it, and it seems that it has worked out well in the past. Um, especially, I mean, if we were to try to take a, a larger undertak, you know, project on like, like, uh, what you're talking about for Forness Park. I mean, it would be great to see, uh, if we're willing to put some skin in the game, um, bit, you know, bill, uh, for the county to, to kick, put some skin in the game as well. Um, certainly. So, um, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, um, Bob, on your list, you have Forness Street. That's different than Forness Park, right?
That was, that was my error that I, um,
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, yes, that was my error and it should have said Forness Park.
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't another project we didn't know about. So thank you, Fred.
I have one more request and that's the restriping projects. And like I said, it, a lot of these projects tie into existing capital projects. Um, this one being along East State Street supports two of the projects that we were just talking about, Walkable only in Phase Three, um, which is, you know, to our west. And, you know, a great deal of the project is kind of bumping out the curb lines. Um, you know, it's traffic calming, it's, the trail is on the north side. And, you know, here, we had planned this out some time ago with figuring out how to get a trail get back into Forness Park so we could connect people to the, the, uh, fields. Um, so this particular restriping project adds parking on the north curb line. And there's a bump out here as you come up out of Orvett's Park. And I, I would imagine RFB here, if this would, was to become the trail entrance to Forness Park. Um, so this is a project I'm trying to fund this year because it goes hand in hand with Walkable and Phase Three. And, um, it takes away that really, really long left turn lane here where people just go forty-five miles an hour down that area. Um, you know, allows for more event parking. Um, this is one of the projects, pretty low cost. Let me know, I guess, if you have, have questions there. And then another really supports, um, Main Street PSAP project. When we vetted out a design at Center Street and Main Street where, you know, we'd had three people get hit in the last couple of years with, with a vehicle, um, and we had to make this crossing shorter. And the state wanted to fund intersection projects. So we came up with a design where we, we bumped out this side. But it really can't be done without restriping the rest of the, um, from Center Street down to Safe Bartlet. And we came up with a plan a while ago that the hospital, you know, Linda was in on it and the mayor was in on it. Hospital was, you know, happy with, they would add some parking, would slow some cars down. We'd get rid of that turn lane, which I think is, isn't, is bad for safety and we would have for our redesign through here. So that's a lot of that request.
Yep. You know, Bob, when, um, I live on Main Street and I go through this intersection, having the two lanes where people can get over to turn in, for some people, it's really confusing. And they stay in that right lane until they turn into the, the medical group or to the dialysis center. And I think if you made it less complicated, I think it would be safer for them. Um, I've had people pull out in front of me to turn and, um, it's just, right now, it's not the safest, you know, traffic pattern along that, that section of Main Street.
Are there many accidents there?
They're close ones. Let me tell you, there have been a couple of people going in or coming out of the medical group. And many of those are people that are trying to turn in from that outside lane. They don't realize they could get over. Um, and they're just not paying attention. So.
I was, I was more asking from Bops of, like, he has that plotter of accidents all over the city. I was kind of going there.
That's the ones I know about.
Yeah. Like I said, there were two separate vehicle and pedestrian collisions here and, you know, a couple of people got seriously hurt. And when you analyze those types of accidents, they're generally related to speed. And when you have a three-lane road in a residential neighborhood where a lot of people are crossing, it's just, it's not good. You got, you, you have to speed up to get out of any of these intersections, whether it's the driveway or Center Street or the hospital. Your cars are coming fast. Your reaction time is just affected. Um, so the goal of that project was to slow people down, make crossing time shorter. I'd have to look at that map and see if there are a lot of vehicle accidents, but, um, I assume that it's pretty heavy through here.
Hey, Bob, that previous restriping that you showed us on East State Street, is that included in this ninety thousand? Because all I see is restriping Main, First, Lawrence and Spring.
Yeah, this included in that cost.
Okay.
Um, it just, I didn't get the note in there, I guess, but.
Okay.
Um, we've been talking about restriping Spring Street for some time and the reason why there's multiple projects, because these have been planned out over the last few years and just doing a small striping project tends to be expensive. So, you know, lumping these in and putting a lot of the sign work that you see here up with city funds, um, you know, what we're talking about doing on Spring Street is taking the parking and moving it from the north side to the south side and reconfiguring all the signage here, you know, the, I've spoken to the school about this project and, you know, they're supportive of it. And some time ago, letters were sent out to residents and there were very little, you know, feedback or there was little to no negative feedback on, on moving parking. It, um, it kind of encapsulates the soccer fields a little better here, um, with, if you've ever driven down there when kids, they're picking up kids, people are picking up their children from the soccer matches. It's really a mess. And you have a lot of streets with no crosswalks. Um, I think this corrects a lot of issues with walkability and, um, the field and the school.
Bob, can I? Can I just point out something, Bob? Um, there are a couple of people on that side of the street that aren't for that because then they have to walk across the street if they have visitors. I'd also point out, most of the houses on that side do have a driveway, so they can park there. But the other thing, and I, I realize this helps the school, um, the school has three different parking lots at Eastview. So if they had to, they could have the parents park there. Um, I know the people at Aspen Tower or Aspen Manor are thrilled about this. Um, so I have mixed feelings about it, but, you know, if the majority of the people you say, um, support it, I, you know, I would support it. Uh, you know, I would support it, but I'm just pointing out the school does have a lot of parking. You know, they could use that for the soccer people. Just my opinion.
I mean, if I can kind of throw in there, I mean, it'd be interesting to see. Um, what people think once it's moved, but I can tell you when those soccer, when they have soccer tournaments, they line up that whole road.
Mm hmm.
And a lot of people are trying to get in and out of their cars on the roadside of their car.
Yeah.
So it does block up that road pretty heavy when when they're doing that. And if they did park on the field side, they take their their cars from that side.
Right, or they could park at the school.
Hey, Bob, can you, can you speak to uh, you know, pedestrian safety on that matter? I would have. Uh, as little kids are running across the street, I mean, is there a best practice as far as parking next to a park or a field like that? You're supposed to park on the park side or the opposite side or?
Oh, I mean, you know, I mean, everything is context based, right? It's everything's different, so. Um, like Alderman Fannis had just said, you know, having vehicles there for access when. When you've got a lot of traffic, which is, you know, when um when soccer match is being played. You know, a ball that be kicked would be stopped by vehicles in a lot of cases um here. Um. I, I mean, I personally think that it would be a safety improvement. Um, you know, to move vehicles over there and to put a center line on and a parking lane. Because right, you know, striping, there's no designation on what to do there. And.
That's true.
Close the curb ramp where there's a hydrant. So in this area. Um, you know, I designated thirty feet where we wouldn't strike, so there's. The availability to have a handicap, you know, spot here and here and somebody to get up on the trail, so it's. It's not just moving and parking on one side, it's it's. Um, this is also a safe for us to school project that we did and. Once you get to the end, there really is nothing, so. Um, I think, so there's no parking, I can see over by Aspen Tower. There's maybe people just kind of walk, you know, and and they, so that curb ramp helps and so does not having parking um, you know, through this area.
Right.
Number of improvements and you really can't, again, if you look up at the school. And. Having parking on this side of the street is far better than having it on the other side of the street, you know, with. Kids, people who are dropping off their kids at school, you could have a drop off zone here if you wanted to and line people up on that side of the street. And you don't have to let your kid get out and get across the street before they go to school.
Hmm, well, you know, and I think um John just made a good point. Um, a lot of our parks have parking on the same side. Um, Oak Hill on Washington Street, it's on the opposite side. But um a lot of them have parking lots like Warvets, you know, uh Fran Shot, Forness. So, you know, but like, if you look right here at your picture, there's a lot of parking here and a lot of the parents do park there. But if you go down further on Alder Street, there's a huge parking lot there too. I'm just given the option. Um, I've just heard from a couple of the residents that. They're not happy with it, but if the majority are okay with it, I don't have a problem. I think anytime you keep kids safe, my kids used to play soccer there. And I think um most parents are pretty responsible, but kids like to run. And you are right about the ball, the ball would go out in the street and the kids would chase it, so. I think that would be safer having the cars there to block it.
One, if if I may, one of the other issues that came up, we've been talking about this for several years now. One of the other issues that came up was the uh driveways being blocked. And uh by this, uh you wouldn't have any blocked driveways if the parking was. Uh, if there was no parking on on uh that side of the street. So that would uh, that could give the uh, a lot of the neighbors comfort there because, you know, they, people would park so tight or, you know, partially blocked the driveway. They couldn't get in and out and then, and so that would take that away also.
True.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, I I want to say that we add like twenty five parking spots to the street. Because if you see how many, you see how many driveways are there, you can only park one car, two cars in between. So it adds more parking spaces than you think, somewhere between like sixty and eighty five spots along the whole lane in the street rather.
If we, that uh field, do I take it that belongs to the school, Bob?
Yeah, it's all city property.
Okay. I'm just curious, I mean, if if it ended up where there were still parking issues and that, I'm curious what the process would be to. Go to the school and recommend, you know, if. That they should look at a parking lot there. Maybe where they used to have the construction site set up.
Yeah, I mean, we have fewer kids. In this community, you know, and and more cars and parking lots to me is just. Counterproductive, you know, we're we're a smaller community and.
Hmm.
That's why the walkability improvements, you know. It allows, you know, children to perhaps even walk to school. I know it's only up to third grade, but.
Yep.
Um, lastly. I'm not sure Lawrence is gonna end up making the final cut for CHIPS funding, but when we do, um, you know, I want to. Uh, expand on what we did at Forest Street and Washington Street and. And our connection with downtown along Lauren Street, putting in some rain gardens or some bump outs. You know, some plantings, perhaps there are some high visibility crosswalks and then striping it as well with the center line and the parking line. Because it's not striped at all, it's kind of a free for all through there. At least I don't think there's a center line through here, but. We can add parking and we can, you know, make all these crossings very short, slow some cars down, you know, and help beautify the street. All four of those projects can be completed, you know, with ninety thousand on this to wrap this discussion up.
And that would also include, I see you have a travel lane and that, is that kind of, or what, oh, I see, there's two travel lanes. Would the idea be to uh potentially continue the Bike Boulevard along that path as well to our downtown?
Probably with like clear lane markings if we did get to that. Another, where the show that's heading into First Street and the North Union Street, but yeah. Um, very real possibility, like I said, this will. Slow cars down three or four mile an hour through here, which allows. For a bike to be able to keep up with traffic if they're confident riding in the street.
Okay, any other questions for Bob? Bob, is that the end of your list? Okay, Fred.
I think Chris Wery is on deck and patiently waiting.
Patiently waiting. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Bob, if you have that, can you share that list again with the Alderman? I don't have that with me, but. I have two capital projects on my list. One is the digital sign at uh. Front and East State and the other one is for ice bumper cars for our uh Recreation Center Ice Rink. Uh, I'll start with a digital sign briefly. Uh, the sign that is out there now is on the East State Street side. It is a wooden sign, it is a welcome to Warvets sign. We are severely severely limited with what we can put on that sign because of the uh the way it's designed and the manual changing of letters. Uh, what we're asking for here is a digital LED message board sign. Uh, sort of similar to what you would see in front of the only a middle school. And what this sign would enable to do in helping to rebrand and remarket the area, there is the sign right there, thank you. Uh, there's a lot of traffic that goes through that intersection, both on Front Street and East State Street. This could be used not only for events for the rec center, Bradner Stadium, our parks program, but citywide events. Uh, it can be used for emergency notices, i.e. if we had a tornado watch. Mayor had to issue a snow emergency, uh Chamber of Onlyon events, the possibilities are endless. Uh, it, I think we need, one of the most important things that I strive to do in our department is getting the word out about what's going on. And this is just one more aspect of that, we're using the social media and the electronic media. But this is another media that we we just can't utilize because as you can see. We're very limited on what verbiage we can put on that sign, so. Uh, are there any questions on the digital sign?
Yeah, Chris, I have a question on there, a couple of them actually now. Uh, now that you, this is a perfect picture of the diagram that Bob Ring just showed. Is illustrating that we're going to put parking along that side. So if you have, say, under trucks or uh pickup trucks or whatever parked along that street. Is the sign going to be tall enough to still be visible or will it be blocked by parking? And then the other thing was uh the vandalism aspect, are we going to have some type of lighting there? Is that a street light that focuses on the street that will actually reach over? Uh, because you know, with the other signs that we had vandalized in the city, we had to do a GoFundMe. And uh twenty five grand for a sign, that's the last thing we'd want vandalized, so.
Understood.
Something there we can take care of.
We're not set specifically with that location of the existing sign, that sign could be moved more forward towards Front Street. So you can capitalize on both intersection, there's plenty of lighting there, both in the parking lot and at the corner. And in regards to the to the parking that may happen on that street, we could certainly make sure that sign is high enough. Again, the new sign would not be an exact copy of that, it would be a little bit bigger, we'd have to make a base for it, a concrete base. So I think we could accommodate those concerns.
Chris, do you have some, um, and I I echo the same concerns uh as as Vernon, I I think. Um. I think it's probably a a pretty good marketing strategy. Um, it's definitely something to consider, but I would was wondering if you had some good examples of. Maybe what other rec departments or other cities have um that that to to kind of help give us a visual of what twenty five grand gets you. I'm sure they, I'm sure they can go up to a hundred grand, but what is a twenty five grand um, you know, electronic LED sign look like?
A twenty five thousand dollar sign gives you a sign that you see there on the screen, similar in size on the bottom. But the main difference is you're getting LED and you're getting the pixels that enable you to put multi messages on there, so. Depending on how you have the programming designed. You can update that stuff daily, weekly, monthly, and you're getting more messaging out than just one static sign. Uh, or one static message that you have out there now. And a lot of these uh local area rec departments have similar signage, at least in a portion on a different facility. And again, like you said, John, what I'm looking at this to is it's overall part of a marketing strategy, not only for the recreation department. But for the city of Onlyon as a whole.
Would you say, to give us an idea, the one in front of the Olean Middle School, is that a twenty five thousand dollar sign or is that a? Fifty thousand dollars?
I believe, I believe that sign was slightly more than twenty five thousand.
Okay.
But again, you have to look at the entire signage, not just the sign itself, but the base and the sides. And 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 how many bells and whistles they put on it.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on the digital sign? Okay, the the second request uh that I have for the department is for ice bumper cars for a recreation uh facility. I sent a email out to the Alderman last week uh from the company designs them and builds them. They're built out in Golden, Colorado. Uh, these, this product here is relatively new to the ice rink market, they're about four years old. And currently they're located in twenty six different ice rinks in the United States. The closest two to where we are are Jamestown and Lockport. I did have the opportunity last year before COVID hit to go out to Jamestown and personally take a look and. Talk to the staff out there about how the, how it was working out, if they were having any mechanical issues. Or if the public enjoyed it and the feedback that I've gotten from them. As well as a couple other places I've called is it was one of the best decisions they've ever made. Uh, what we, what we view it at here in Onlyon, it gives people another activity to do. Especially during the fall and winter months. And just so the council has an idea, you know, we're tracking our customer accounts at the, at the rec center for ice skating. Uh, the two thousand eighteen and the two thousand nineteen season. We had a total of over ten thousand three hundred and fifty people that came through the doors just for public ice skating. That does not include an additional three thousand that we had around the Christmas holiday season, which uh are donated public ice skating sessions. Last year, prior to COVID hitting, again, we were shortened by about three weeks. We experienced a seventeen percent increase in our customer count from the prior year. Or in other words, we had fifteen hundred additional people come through the doors for public ice skating, so. We've got a tremendous draw, we've got a fantastic facility. This is just another avenue to get more revenue in, get more people in. Uh, this could be used during public ice skating, we would split the ice in half, half would be for skating, half would be for bumper cars. We could also utilize the bumper cars exclusively on the ice for team building exercises, birthday parties. Uh, any sort of events that people want to have. So it's 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 an avenue, an avenue to draw, to bring in people and to bring in revenue.
Chris.
We could do team building with all the Alderman.
Yeah.
For the first event.
Sounds like fun. Chris, how much are they per um car?
Per car, they are five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the nine thousand dollars that I'm asking for. Would enable us to pay for the freight as well as a fifteen percent down payment on those cars. And then the company will trigger an eighteen month period to pay off the balance of those cars, so we've been using the revenue. That we bring in to pay off the the balance of the cars. So.
Okay.
How much are they per car?
Five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Per car?
Per car, yes, sir.
Wow.
Yeah.
I was thinking maybe we could get some corporate sponsors and have their name on the side.
What cars do you need for bumper cars?
Well, the the idea is to start with six and to see how it grows and eventually I'd like to, I'd like to see us have twelve. You know, just for an example, these cars are are used for fifteen minute intervals. So depending on what you would charge, you're bringing in a hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty dollars per hour. In revenue just from your ice bumper cars. Uh, that does not include, you know, group rates or parties or team building or school parties. So the potential is there for some some decent return on revenue.
Hey, Chris, I went to the website and I checked it out and I I really love the idea. Um, I was questioning uh when I read on there that you can use it for parties and for events. And you just mentioned there, you know, use them for fifteen minute intervals. How long does one battery charge last? And if, let's say if we had back to back parties, would? Would the battery last? Would we be able to sufficiently be able to continuously go with supporting different events and and stuff like that?
Good question. Any any one party that we would have would be an hour and a half to two hours in length. And we would, we would never have on our schedule based because of all the other usage that we have from hockey groups and skating. We would have plenty of time if needed to recharge prior to the next event, so in other words. We're not going to have to cancel or schedule an event differently because we have to recharge.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
So just um to help me, and I and I understand if you make the schedule in advance, Chris, you could, you can. Schedule the time for this, but. Just from your past presentations, it seems like our rink time is pretty booked and used pretty, pretty well uh. Now, so I guess what? What days or what times are you thinking that this would be a selling point? You know, we we do pretty good as it is with our rink, so what, how are you seeing how we can even further maximize the usage there?
Okay, great question. We can further maximize by because we offer nine to ten different public ice skating sessions weekly, so there's, there's one source there. But another important, underutilized source right now is during the daytime. And this is where your school groups and your corporate team building and your special events and your school holidays when folks are off. That is a period of time where our revenue growth could really skyrocket because with this. People are going to say, yeah, I want to come to the rink because not only can I skate, I can run these bumper cars too, so there is, you are right. Our ice time is pretty well filled, but there's holes in there and there are better ways to utilize the time that we have.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Chris, would you um ever see a time where we would? If we were to purchase these and it really took off, to extend the time that we leave the the ice on?
Absolutely. Yes, if the demand is there and we and we can, we can fit it into our schedule, we would definitely consider doing that. That's a, that's a smart business decision. Yes, and just so you know, our ice skating season right now, you know, is twenty eight, twenty eight weeks long, so that facility right now. Is an ice skating facility two thirds of the year. So, and these, these cars could also be used during this, during the summer season on our sport court floor. We've asked that question to the company, so we could maybe have some events during the off season. That could generate some more revenue too inside the, inside the rec center.
Chris, I'm sorry, I I I.
Here.
Hey, bringing this up, but I just don't understand it, maybe you said it and I missed it, but.
Sure.
Your request is for nine thousand dollars bumper cars plural for ice rink.
Yes.
And you say the cars cost five thousand dollars a piece, are we going to buy one bumper car?
No. The company has offered us as a city an eighteen month financing period. So what we have to pay up front. So what we have to pay upfront is the freight, which is about three thousand dollars and then fifteen percent of the cost, so that equates to about nine thousand dollars. That's what I'm requesting right now, because once we get these cars in, say we get them by September first, we start making revenue on that, we can use the revenue generated by that to keep paying off our balance.
So it's like our lease program, but we were leasing the old.
Right, and, and I, the company understands that, because I told them, I said, folks, you know, I, I can't go forward and ask the council for thirty some thousand dollars right off the, the start. What can you do for us? How can you work with us? And they've gotten back to me, and this is where we, this is where the discussion is led as we speak.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
You ever figured out what you could make in a season? I mean, are we going to make enough money to pay for these cars?
Again, Dave, depends what you charge, but you could definitely be well over twenty thousand per season and possibly more than that. It depends, you know, we would have to set a price per fifteen minute interval. And most places are charging six or eight dollars. So, and then we would do group rates for, like I said, the team building stuff. So depending on what we charge and how much we get the team building and all that other stuff going, is going to reflect that final number.
And the other question I have too, would the insurance rates for such activities like this go up? Because bumper cars could be kind of dangerous and fractures and neck sprains or whatever.
Uh, we would have to look into that a little deeper, but I don't view it as any more of a risk than public ice skating. Because these, these things are not, they are bumper cars, but they're not designed to go, you know, X amount miles per hours. And they've been used, I did ask that question to Jamestown, and they've had no instances of somebody getting hurt riding a bumper car. They're strapped in, we would check that as a staff, and they're designed for anybody from the age of six or seven, all the way up to over seventy. That's what they're designed to do.
There you go, Linda.
I, hey, wait a minute. Quite that old. No, I think it sounds great, um, do you know if Jamestown's going to be opening or are they using theirs now?
They're using theirs now, they're using the reservation system, kind of like what we're doing for public skating because of COVID. You know, until COVID, you know, ends itself, but they are taking reservations. And like I said, they, they've had nothing but compliments on them.
No, I was just thinking, you know, um, you know, if we wanted to individually, we could maybe run up and check them out.
Sure.
Well. Any other questions for Chris?
Uh, the only, I'd just like to put in there, I think it sounds like an awesome thing to do, I think we need to try it out regardless. Uh, you have new activities to come around. Um, the only thing I would ask is do we have the current staff if there are mechanical issues?
I did ask that question both to Jamestown and the company. Any mechanical issues that we have are easily, uh, the staff we have on hand could handle. Then we'll get instruction from the company as well as video backup. And as part of the package, they, they teach you, you know, if this component needs an issue, this is what you do, A, B, C, and D. So it's something that our staff could, could easily handle.
Sounds good.
I just want to point out that the, the cost to replace a kind of playground in the city of Olean is roughly sixty thousand dollars. These are two projects right here, thirty, twenty five and nine thousand dollars that I would rather allocate those monies towards a playground or, or something like that, but.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, um, the one's going to be for Fred. Um, the paperwork from the municipal solutions, uh, as I was looking at that, uh, the bonding was two point nine, capital projects was five hundred and seventy two. The fleet equipment was one point three mil, that left a balance of a little over a million. I need a refresher, what was that last million for?
I, I think we're mixing apples with oranges here. Um, the two point nine million is for, uh, Carrie and Bob, help me out, it's for the, uh, North Union Streetscape. And the, um, phase three walkable and.
Walkable Olean.
So they're, they're not connected, uh, Vern.
They're not, okay, gotcha, and then the other one was for the fleet minutes. Uh, there was discussion about the rate going up for, uh, the fire engine, so I guess this would be for Chief Richardson. Uh, Fire Chief Richardson. Um, is there a way of locking in that rate so that we don't get hit with that seventeen grand? And if not, can we walk away from them and find another vendor? I mean, I personally, when someone tells me, oh, you better get it now or the rate's going to go up, and I say, let it go up, I'll find someone else. So is there, do we have that option or?
Uh, we did talk to the, after the fleet meeting, uh, the Alderman, what an Alderman Anastasia were at. Uh, they were basically, it's set till today, it's not like they're holding us hostage. But it's a three percent chassis increase, which we knew about back in probably February. And, um, so it had been going along, going along, and then now, uh, they have extended it to the nineteenth that they'll guarantee the price. Uh, the other thing is, is that, um, the, the purchase agreement is that we intend to purchase. Or we, the council does not have to come up with that money at this point, it's just, it starts the process of, you know, drawing the plans of the truck, doing all that, because keep in mind, the, right now, I would say best case scenario, this truck has delivered sixteen to eighteen months from signing this agreement. That, that's what we're looking at for build time, because Bob can testify, so can Ron as well, that just the, the vehicles are taking so long to get here because of the factories being shut down, that it's, it's, it's difficult to even pin them down.
Well, with that, how about if we get into the potential bonding? Um, Chief Richardson just gave you an update on the pumper truck. Um, is there anything else you want to say about the pumper truck chief?
Yeah, that, the six twenty five that's listed there, that puts the truck that is fully equipped, so when we look down to the twenty twenty two budget, you'll see that that public safety equipment line will, and communications will come down, that vehicle, we're going to get hosed with it and we're going to get the radios with it as well. So I'm looking down the road that if we, being that this is a bond, that we can push that equipment into this vehicle now. And that's something that in twenty twenty two, uh, twenty twenty three budget that we, that will come off that, as, as we look forward towards strategic planning.
Okay, any questions on the pumper truck? Nope, okay, um, I'll turn it over to Bob to discuss the back truck, the sweeper and the loader.
Or so, we're requesting three vehicle purchases, the sweeper being the, you know, our, our sweeper that goes out at night. Um, starting this time of year, starting to clean up the salt and the dust and then eventually getting on our regular schedule where we do every road is, you know, with street sweeping. Um, we have, we have two sweepers, but our newest one is eleven years old. Um, every year our mechanics take it apart, replace, um, all the, all the parts that need to replace. And, you know, every year the, the costs are rising since it's a whole machine and, um, you know, the environment that it's put in is, is very taxing. Um, as it, you know, picks up dust and things and all the vacuum system that, that's part of the vehicle, so we're, we're looking to replace that. Um, which is generally placed, replaced on a ten year schedule. Um, similarly with, with the VACCON, um, which we use to, you know, clean out our sewers. Um, it's a water truck, it's also, um, has a vacuum attachment and, uh, um, a tank that we can use for excavation around gas lines or painting out catch basins, um, for storm sewer, painting out sanitary sewer, we use it around the plant. Um, that's going to be funded through the sewer fund, but that's over ten years old. And again, the environment that it's used in is very corrosive and taxing and it, we're, we've had some really expensive repairs between five and ten thousand dollar repairs on that piece of equipment, so it's, it's starting to show its age, it's, um, you know, it's being difficult for our mechanics to, um, for upkeep year to year and, uh, um, and then we're also looking to replace a high lift, which is, you know, a loader, um, front end loader or high lift, however you want to call it, um, it has the large bucket on the front and it's got, um, four wheels, so it's very mobile around town, but we use it for snow pickup, we use it for, um, salt loading into our trucks, we use it during our mill and pave season. It's used, um, mostly by our general fund, but I think Brad and I talked about funding it a little bit out of water and sewer, um, since it is used by, modern sewer as, as, as they need it and, and on our mill and pave projects to clean out around our water lines and sewer lines. That's, like I said, we have, we have two of them, they're two different sizes, this is our larger one, um, that we use for snow pickup. Um, it's over ten, ten years old and, uh, you know, it's, it's time to replace it for the same reasons as the other two vehicles.
Hey Bob, do any of, uh, these current vehicles have any sort of, uh, salvage value to them, um, you know, the existing vehicles we have? And if so, is there a way that you could estimate or give a ballpark what we could, you know?
Costs that you see, uh, turn value of trade in value for machines, so we, we either, you know, with, in the case of say VACCON, they're kind of a proprietary company, they're the only one that makes machines like that. So we just turn it back into them and you give us a, a cost reduction.
So, so we would, we would trade in our existing truck to them and get something for it?
Yeah, same thing with the sweeper and I'm not a hundred percent sure on the high lift.
But we don't know what that is ballpark, ten, ten thousand, fifty thousand?
Um, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't.
It's all right, um, chief, same question to you with our, do we have the existing, uh, pumper truck, is that, would that be something that would go out of the rotation, uh, be, be sold off?
Uh, that, uh, you, you're more than likely going to either auction that to a contractor type company. Uh, the truck that it's replacing is a nineteen ninety six, it's out of its NFPA recommended guidelines where, you know, generally your rule of thumb is ten years frontline, ten years reserve and, and get rid of it. Um, so that being that that truck's now twenty, twenty five, going on twenty six years old, its serviceable life is quickly expiring.
Right, so probably very little even at an auction?
Sure, and, and I can look just to see what they're getting for these vehicles, you know, typically you're probably looking at maybe ten grand. Um, you know, and stuff like that, and we could certainly put that back in, but that'd be shooting high.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Uh, Bob, I have one more question, this is going to be my last one, I promise. Um, the street sweeper, I can't help but to think about, uh, I know we talked about how we put the gravel down on Washington Street, I can't remember the, the term that you guys use for that. But I can't help but to think that a street sweeper isn't designed to go down a street and literally pick up all of the gravel that was just laid down, the loose gravel. Um, i- is that not adding wear and tear or shortening the life of the sweeper?
Uh, you mean when we tar and chipped Washington Street?
Yes, and it lays down all of the gravel, the, the, the loose sand?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, we, we wouldn't pick that up with the sweeper typically, I mean, it, it would go into part of our, our rotation after time. But we wouldn't go pick up the loose stone, you know, with the sweeper automatically. We, you know, we'd give it a couple of weeks to kind of set in and.
Right.
Uh, I know you've been around Olean for a long time, but twenty years ago, that process was incredible amount of loose stone, people had to shovel it out of their driveways. So that process has improved a lot, you know, the amount of stone put down isn't as excessive as it used to be, so it's less wear and tear, but, um, you know, it is what it's made for, even picking up stones that size, which are kind of the size of a dime maybe.
Okay.
Bob, I have a question, have we, um, ever looked into, I know Salamanca has like a vacuum cleaner. They pick up stuff like leaves and things, have we ever looked into switching from the sweeper to a vacuum cleaner? You know, it's, it's a big vacuum that they use.
Yeah, I think this has come up a couple of times and, you know, we've talked to Mark Donahue about it and apparently it, it can be a common maintenance nightmare. Um, you know, if leaves are clean and they're only leaves, then that works well, but if there's brush mixed in with it, which is often the case in Olean. Um, you know, that it can cause breakdowns and that's the advice that I've gotten, I've never really used that, that machine, but.
Yeah, I remember watching them in Salamanca use it, it was pretty nifty, you know, they just went along and vacuumed the leaves and, and, um, it seemed, you know, pretty thorough, so, um, I just thought I'd ask that question.
Guys, I'd like just to kind of touch on what John got into a little bit with the vehicles and their resale. Um, just kind of working in industry, dealing with trade ins a little bit. I think when you, when you tend to trade things in, those companies are usually going to go auction style to unload that equipment anyway. And I think it may, it may be to our benefit to look into, uh, kind of standardizing our process on things we're getting rid of. Uh, through some kind of municipal auction setup. Um, at least then you know you're, you're getting what the market's paying for what you're getting rid of.
Yeah, um, I think during, uh, fleet management, Mark Donahue is, is our mechanic. And he, um, he's kind of standardized it so he knows where to take things. Sorry, and we're not, so I think we do that. Um, like I know the county has a company that comes in and takes all your vehicles to auction, but Mark pretty much oversees that. Am I correct in that, Bob? Sorry.
I don't know what he's referring to as a standard process, but, you know, we use it, I think the more popular options, I, I can't think of the name of the site. Uh, you know, there's a, um, fire department vehicle that we're not going to get much for, that we're going to auction off in house, we've done that before too. We weigh our options in, in fleet.
Um, so I want to just follow up on, um, and ask the, the mayor, I know, uh, or Fred, uh, you both, I think you told me there was going to be a report out, um, from maybe Senator Schumer's office on the funding, I mean, obviously this is a big dollar, quite a large dollar amount. Um, and yeah, there's always the potential for bonding, but at the same time, uh, if we don't have to bond, uh, I think that, uh, you know, behooves our, our taxpayers in the long run, uh, but certainly there's a lot of, uh, necessary projects here. So my question is, do we have any further insight on this money that, that we shall be receiving in terms of our COVID? Uh, and any stipulations as to what that money can be used towards? Um, any, would you like to share any insight there?
Yeah, we, uh, I sat in on a webinar today and I'm not sure if, I, I did send the invitation out to all of you. I'm not sure if any of you were sitting on it, but Fred sat in on it, I sat in on it. In all honesty, we don't know much more than we already knew. Uh, we do know that the one point four seven million, as we are getting that, uh, we know it's going to be in two payments. Uh, seven hundred and thirty six, uh, nine hundred and seventy three, you know, we'll get that, uh, sometime now after listening to today's program. Uh, you know, it's supposed to be coming, it's supposed to be going to the states within sixty days of the senator, of the president signing. And then the state has thirty days to get it out to the communities. But found out today that the states can ask for up to ninety additional days to get it out to the municipalities and they have to show cause. So, uh, and a lot of it would be the, uh, the, uh, mechanics of how it's happening, there's, uh, you know, they talked about, uh, so many, there's so many, uh, villages and towns and, and that, that the, uh, treasury, uh, Treasury Department did not want to, uh, take on the lead of passing the money out to all of them. They would rather, uh, lump sum it to the states and then the states send it out, so. But after Senator Schumer talked for several, for probably thirty or forty five minutes and, uh, you know, talked about what's there, but really didn't give us a lot of additional information. The Treasury Department will be coming out with the guidelines for the use of this money. Now, he, he did go over what, uh, I believe I sent a document out to you and it had what the, uh, the, the potent, or four uses of it could be. the, the potent, uh, four uses of it could be. So that hasn't changed. We are still, Nikon is gonna keep on top of it. I did send you before, uh, prior to the meeting today, I did send you the Nikon document uh, that, uh, that has the, uh, some of the information there. They are gonna be keeping up on top of this. Uh, Senator Schumer said his office will also be keeping up on top of this and be sending us information. So the, uh, short answer is, uh, we don't know a lot more than what we already knew. So, you know, so it's, uh, they went over, you know, they did say like New York State is gonna get thirty-five billion dollars. And, uh, they already got twenty-three billion last year. So the senator did say that, that the state should not be cutting any of our funding from the state funding because they are being, they're being made debt-free or, you know, they're being made whole on their debt with these federal stimulus. So he did say that we gotta keep on top of this. Keep on, reach out to our legis, state legislators and, uh, continue to remind them that the state is being, you know, is getting, you know, billions of dollars from the federal government to satisfy their debt. And that they should not, uh, they should not take away any of the funding to the, to the municipalities. So, uh, it's, uh, it's gonna, you know, so it's, it's kind of a wait and see what we can use it for. So we know we can use some of it. That, that we've been impacted by services, impacted by reduction in revenue resulting from the pandemic. We can figure that out. I lost revenues that we've had. Uh, we can figure that portion out. Uh, invest in, in water and sewer and broadband projects. Now that's another one. We still have to wait for the, uh, the, uh, Treasury Department to come out with the, uh, with the, uh, uh, regulations or the, what we have to follow there. Uh, we, we are gonna be held accountable. So we are gonna have to, whatever we spend it on, we are gonna, it's gonna have to fit what's in the regulations that are gonna be coming out. So, so.
Okay.
Bill, could I add a couple of things? I think one good thing is that we're guaranteed that New York State is not going to glom our money. That, that money, um, Senator Schumer emphasized that New York State cannot do anything with our share. We were, we're Olean and Alloquatville and all the other communities and villages are guaranteed this money. So, uh, Albany cannot sit on one point four seven million dollars. The other thing, Bill, I, I don't know if you took it the same way, but there seemed to be some confusion between the House and Senate versions and we really don't know what we're gonna get until the Treasury Department uh, comes up with that figure. So I'm not saying it's gonna be one point eight seven million. But, uh, did you get that feeling, Bill, that, that there's still little doubt exactly what amount we're getting?
No, I thought, uh, my take was that Senator Schumer was quite adamant that what is on, on the list that came out of his office is what we're gonna get. And that's the one point four seven three. So I, I did not feel that there was any, you know, that there was a, a chance to get more or less because it's all formula based.
Okay.
So I.
Okay. Uh, Fred, I have a question for you. So, um, after what the mayor just said, so will we get our original AIM funding? Instead of the, what it was at a twenty percent or ten percent decrease?
Well, I, I, one of the first things I did was after the meeting is I went into Bill's office and I said, I would like to think that the governor would restore AIM to one hundred percent now that we know that they have received a terrific amount of money. That
Right.
remains to be seen. Um, the good news we got was our March payment. There was only a five percent reduction. We weren't sure if it was gonna be zero, you know, or fifteen percent or twenty. So we took a five percent hit, which isn't great news, but it's a lot better than a twenty percent cut or a ten percent cut. But to answer your question, that remains to be seen. We certainly hope the governor will restore AIM to, uh, one hundred percent.
And, and on a, on a, on a side note, uh, from the, uh, from the state budget, uh, they, I guess they call it a one-house budget. Uh, they, they came back with that. And, uh, if it stands, all of the Ames funding has been restored. Uh, so if that, if it passes, uh, you know, in, in the, uh, the budget passes, as it stands right now, all of the Ames funds have been restored and there's even additional monies in there. So, uh, we'll see what happens with that.
That's good news.
I, I just read that today on the Nikon site, so.
Okay. So, um, does anybody have any questions on the capital projects or the potential for bonding for our four vehicles?
Um, Bob, would you be nice enough to bring up that sheet that had the five hundred seventy-two thousand dollars on it? And this is just food for thought. Uh, we're not sure what Ames funding we're going to get and the timing of it, but uh, if there's some items that you really like, I just wanted to remind you that there's a hundred fifty thousand dollars left in contingency. It's almost May thirty-first and, um, I'm suggesting that you look at that list and possibly some of that could be funded out of this year's remaining contingency.
So in that, in that regard, Fred, is there still seventy-five remaining in both the water and the sewer as well contingency from this year?
Yes, uh, but I didn't see anything out of that five seventy-two that you could take, uh, from water and sewer. That would strictly be, it looks like to me, all general fund.
Well, I was just, yeah, and I was wondering, maybe not from that list, but from down below with regards to a vehicle.
Absolutely.
You know, would, would there be an opportunity, say, uh, you know, with the loader, for example, if, if, you know, or some, one of those that we could potentially use some of that contingency money from?
Sure. I, I think what Bob and I need to do is maybe get with, uh, Dave DeTanna and say, what's a fair distribution of that? Uh, the two eighteen or the two, two eighteen, five hundred and the one forty-three hundred?
Yeah.
Could, could it be fifty percent, twenty-five, twenty-five? And if it's twenty-five, twenty-five, then yes, we could do a budget transfer using contingency and water and sewer to help pay for that.
Okay. If you could look into that, that would be helpful.
I will.
Okay.
Guys, I just wanna interject with one thing and, cause I haven't seen it and maybe I'm just missing it somehow. Um, but I was curious if we're continuing the sidewalk program, if we've rolled that into regular budget, if we're still gonna do that through capital tracking. Have we, have we lost track of that for this year or is it in the budget?
It is not in, there is not a line item in this year's budget for it. That is, uh, for the council to, uh, at this point, add it to the budget.
And I think what we've done, Jason, in the past is I, I think we've, we've moved twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand out of, uh, the general fund and in, into the capital fund. So it, it, uh, remind me, but I, I don't believe we've actually had the sidewalk program as being funded in our budget for the last couple of years. It's been a.
I believe, uh, I believe last year we took it, that was part of the contingency transfer that we did.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Yep. And that would definitely be something that I would consider taking out a contingency again this year.
I agree.
I think we should. I just remember, um, you know, Alderman Doherty had brought something up about how something to do with that sidewalk program and the fact that we were tracking it as capital. We ended up with our accounts mismatching and something not balancing right. And I thought we talked about rolling it into a line item on the budget.
Uh, there was discussion of having both, uh, a, a capital fund where the uh, taxpayer helps pay the bill. And there was, uh, another uh, line item in the general fund for just general sidewalk repairs, as I remember it.
Yeah, I got you. You're, you're touching more on what I was thinking of there, Fred.
With, uh, with that also being said, as we're kind of looking at the big numbers here, um, I don't, I, I did want to bring forward, so I'm glad somebody jogged my memory. Um, speaking of capital projects, so if you recall in BWB's presentation, um, and, and I don't know if we need a formalized process or a policy put in place. Um, but it, it, we've got about a hundred and, I thought the number that sticks in my head is about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of capital projects. I think the biggest one, uh, being from North Union Street. That, that essentially they ran over budget and they need to be closed. And the recommendation from BWB was we, in order to close those, we need to transfer money out of the general fund. Um, Fred, is that correct?
That's correct. And, and I haven't, I've been very reluctant to ask the councils to do it over the last two or three years because we've tried so hard to remain within the tax cap and we're doing everything we possibly can to come in at zero or one or two percent. I, I didn't want to even approach the subject because, uh, everything's been so tight the last few years. But you are correct. It would, uh, we would have to transfer money from the general fund, uh, to the capital fund to do that.
I mean, you know, help, help me understand the accounting on that. I mean, are we, can, are are we allowed to run that into perpetuity? Just have negative balances on our books for those? Like, I mean, I guess what's I, that's the right thing to do is to close them out, but what if we don't?
That's, uh, hypothetically, what could happen is ten years from now, we, we have no capital projects to work on. There's going to be, our, our cash in the bank would be a negative, uh, a hundred eighty thousand dollars. So you would run out of cash.
Right. Agreed. So that is something that, um, that was brought up that I, I felt was material that, you know, I think we, we do need to consider and I do think we probably need a policy to address that, um, after the budget is over with, um, in terms of, I, I just don't understand how my under, what our auditors have told us is once we are done receiving any of the potential grant funding from, uh, the agencies and the capital project is over with, um, then we should have a policy that says we need to close it. Whether we have a negative balance or not, we need to, um, hold ourselves to, to that standard. Um, although I do realize and I appreciate what Fred's saying, times are tough, but that's the right thing to do.
Uh, maybe John can, uh, a consideration is to uh, transfer this hundred eighty thousand dollars over the next five years, just a thought. Uh, instead of one big bite, uh, maybe we could do it that way. It's a council decision.
Yeah. So typically, I mean, Vernon, you're, I believe you're, you're new to the process and Dave, um, you're still, I guess, you're newer to the process. Um, but the, how we've addressed, um, as far as from a council perspective, uh, obviously we've given, been given a, an abundance of information um, on capital projects, on certainly the budget itself. Um, and so what I ask, uh, of the council members is to go through the budget and, um, and come up with a list of questions. I mean, now's the time to ask, uh, in the next week, I would say. They have a list of questions, concerns, clarifications, whatever else, um, what you would like to see perhaps changed and we, we stay at a higher level. Um, I, I don't think it's beneficial to go down and, and say, you know, in this account, on this line, uh, your, um, your, your office supplies needs, should be a hundred dollars lower. Um, what we're taking a look at is, is really, um, obviously from a materiality, right? Uh, uh, the high level. Are you on board with what is being proposed? And if not, what changes, um, would you request? And to send those changes to me, uh, to send any questions or concerns to Fred, to the mayor, um, certainly, but, uh, even, even down through this list, um, if you could rank what you would like to see, what you think is worth buy, if you think it's worth to pay, to spend one point three million on the whole, the whole thing. Um, if you think bonding is a good idea, really try to spend some time. And, and we can reconvene, uh, either next week and review all of our thoughts. Um, but I, I think that's, that's been a decent strategy that we've used in the past. Bill, the budget has to be passed by when?
I, it has to be passed by April fifteenth.
Okay. So we do have a, we have a fifth Tuesday in the month. So next week is our regular meeting. Um, so I, it has to be passed by the fifteenth.
Think maybe on the fifth Tuesday, we should use it to, uh, go over some final thoughts and, uh, what we wanna cut. I was gonna ask you or, or Fred, what, and we're asking for a one, Bill's asking for a one point three percent increase. What is one percent that we would have to find in the budget? Is it sixty-five thousand?
Roughly seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand? So if we wanted to go with a zero percent, we're looking to try to find roughly ninety thousand?
Ninety to one hundred, correct.
Uh, I just feel that with COVID and with people being laid off and with Siemens being shut down, we should seriously look to see how, how far down we can go in this budget, close to a zero percent increase because a lot of people are hurting right now. And I know one percent doesn't sound like a lot. And we had a zero percent last year, but, uh, we're still in a pandemic. So I think we should give some serious thought to see what, how we can, how we can find at seventy to ninety thousand dollars and even ask the department heads for their input, uh, what can they, what can they live with this year that we may, may not have discussed that they can take out of the budget voluntarily? Be appreciative if they would come up front.
And Dave, I, I, I just want to preface, if it was only that simple. So here, here are my concerns, um, with regards to that. And it's from a sustainability standpoint. I, I think it's a, it's a great sell to go with a, a zero percent. We did it last year. Times were really tough. We didn't know what we were being faced with. And, and, and I think it's, yeah, I mean, it, it, it totally makes sense. My concern is we start getting into a point where we did it last year, we do it this year. Uh, we've, well, next year's gonna be difficult too. Um, and that's gonna put the council in a position where what, five years down the road or four years down the road, we're faced with breaking the tax cap. We're faced with having to then at that point increase five percent or six percent. Um, because, you know, we can take a look at, we're do, uh, my suggestion would be, we're, look at reducing uh, the, uh, tapping into the half a million dollars of fu, of, of fund balance and reducing that. But when you don't raise your, your taxes, right? It's a compounding effect that, uh, because our, our, you know, our, our workforce, our costs go up. They don't stop. They don't, uh, the union employees are gonna get their, their increases. They got their increases last year. They're gonna get their increases this year. And all I'm saying is those continue to grow. And from a financial standpoint, okay, well, maybe we can do it this year, but you know, the idea is gonna probably come up again next year. And it's just, I, I just fear that we could be setting ourselves up for failure. The same way people that thought it was a great idea never to raise water rates back in the eighties or nineties. And then we got hit with, oh, we gotta jack these things up, you know, thirty percent. Um, so I just want to issue that as, as a word of caution.
John, can I interrupt?
I, I actually make a comment on pro, on that before you go, Fred.
Sure.
I just want to say that I completely agree with what John Crawford just said. I think it'd be a mistake to do it. I think to go to, to claw down to a zero percent. I think it looks good in the paper. It sounds good to say, yeah, we did this with the average, uh, property owner. What's that gonna save them? Tens of dollars. I mean, it's, it's not a, uh, you know, it, it's not a huge a savings it is, but I, I think the long-term ramifications of, of it are, are much more dangerous. So, uh, I'm, I'm with Crawford on this one.
And I can say something to, before Fred speaks, um, you know, the other thing to keep in mind, um, is remember about forty-five to forty-eight percent of the properties in Olean are taxed exempt. So you're already putting that on the other taxpayers. The other thing is with Siemens downsizing eventually, within the next year or so, they're going to be coming back to the city of Olean to get their taxes, their property taxes reduced because a lot of companies do. So that's another hit. The other thing, if you look at the properties we've taken down and taken off the tax rows, um, we just took one down behind a firehouse on First. We took a property down on East State Street. They might sound and look like small amounts, but if you do, as we've done, 40 to 50 of them, that adds up over time. So I think we have to, to keep in mind that we're putting more and more burden on fewer taxpayers. Um, and I, I think even with the water and sewer, I would be fine increasing even the sewer this year. Maybe one and a half or even 2% because the water and sewer is a user fee. Everybody uses water and sewer, but when you're talking about the property taxes, it's about maybe what 51% of the people paying for everybody. So, you know, just keep that in mind. It's just another way of looking at things. And that's been brought up to me many times.
If I could share my thought, John, I, I am 100% in agreement with you. And I've had side conversations with the mayor. I don't live in Olean. I, I love Olean and the people have treated me well. And the last thing I want to see happen is that down the road, we have to raise taxes seven or eight and 10% because we were very generous by doing 0, 0, 0. We need that 1.3% next year. So if you cut to zero, you're losing that 1.3 next year. It's a compounding thing and John, I'm, I'm totally on board with you. Um, I don't want to see Olean doing, uh, having the taxpayers face a double-digit increase five years from now.
And, and tha, thank you. Thanks, Fred. I mean, I just, um, that's, that's what uh, can, and, and Paul and, and Linda for, for that advice, that I, I, I totally get it. I, I know we're all hurting and I know Olean is hurting, um, and, and I understand the financial impact, but as Paul pointed out, um, what a, a 1.3% increase amounts to on the average house, I don't know.
10 bucks.
10 bucks, 15 bucks. Um, and, but what's, when you start running and you say you look at two or three years of 0%, but each time, uh, our, our union employees are, you know, the contractual employees are getting their one and a half to 2% every year. Uh, and that really makes up the big portion of that. Plus, we got hit with this, um, what the unemployment pension. It's, I, I, part of my job, sometimes our job is delivering unfavorable news. And I just think that would be setting us up for longer-term failure, uh, or issues. So that's just my two, my two cents looking at the numbers.
Thank you for letting me contribute my two cents.
Anybody else?
With, with that being said, I still think, you know, if you have any suggestions or opportunities, I think it's a bigger and, and it's something that we've faced in the past. And I understand the needs for it. I understand our fund balance is healthy. We've all worked together to help it get it to that point. Um, but there still is a, a proposal to take, if I'm not mistaken, about $500,000 out of the fund balance. Is that right, Fred?
Yes. And, and again, we've, we've added 376 to it. So we're, at this point, we're at, we're, we're less, lowering the fund balance by $125,000. And I think by May 31st, I can tell you with some reasonable assuredness of what we might add to the fund balance this year and I, I, I'm 99.9% con, convinced in the general fund, we will do that. We will be adding something to fund balance for 2020, 21, based on the first nine months of the year.
You know, I, I would, and I understand the position we're in. I would much rather see us be able to take $100,000 out of fund balance, right, and put it into street brickwork. But, uh, the big, the big punch to the gut this year was, was certainly that, uh, the unemployment, the pension, uh, funds, um, requirement. So um, on a side note, there's been no word about that bill from NICOM, uh, no put, no give on the comptroller's office?
No, from what the, what I did read, uh, none of the stimulus money can be used to, uh, to be put into a pension fund.
Okay. Um, okay. So just to reiterate, um, you know, if you have comments, obviously tonight, by all means, share them. But maybe, uh, I like Dave's idea as far as scheduling more of a council discussion. Come with your thoughts, your requests, your suggestions prepared for the 30th. Um, so unfortunately I, I will ask that we meet again Tuesday, uh, the 30th, um, in a, a work session to, to review, uh, the council's, uh, feedback. Does that work for everybody?
Do you want to meet at 5:30?
That's fine for me.
Okay.
And Linda, just a reminder before we adjourn, that you wanted to mention the tractor purchase as well.
Oh, yes.
Fleet equipment.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. With that being said, um, we will reconvene on the budget discussion on March 30th at 5:30. And like as John, um, put out there, bring your questions or concern. And then we'll move forward to the fleet equipment purchase. And I'll pass this back to Bob about the mower. Bob?
All right. The, the tractor that we're replacing?
Yes. The one instead of leasing, we decided to purchase.
Yeah. And, and I can email you all perhaps the payment information. Sorry, I don't have the cost number off the top of my head, but we have a, a vehicle that's enclosed that we use year round, um, for snow removal and also, um, on our fields and in our parks. It's a small John Deere tractor. And there's an issue with it where there's an exhaust problem and we sent it to John Deere, you know, to be, and to be serviced and they couldn't figure out what was wrong with it. Put it back in service and our employees were still complaining, you know, multiple employees about, um, you know, exhaust fields that they were smelling. So we're, you know, John Deere is willing to take that tractor back and we would turn it in. And there's multiple options, um, for payment, but I believe our fleet committee recommended pay foring it outright. And it's, it's in the 20, 25,000 dollar range. Did we agree to take that funding out of the fleet balance or are we going to try and use budgeted funds and pay for it over several years?
Fred, do you remember?
I think what we have left in fleet has largely been earmarked for the fire department truck for Tim, that was it about 45,000? We, we've got 55,000.
If I may, if I may interject, when we talked that fleet, uh, the, the pickup truck is 42,000. And then we had 50, I believe we had 56 in there. So we talked that we had the, uh, we got it down to about $3,000 that we would have to have. And, uh, we're going to sell the, the previous, we're going to bid out the pickup truck, uh, that the, that the fire department is replacing. And, uh, Mark thought we could get with the plow, we could get possibly, uh, maybe a thousand dollars. So that brings us down to 2,000 and we feel that we can cover that, uh, with the existing budget. So we won't have to, uh, go to the council and, uh, ask for any more, any, any money, uh, to, uh, to fund that.
Okay. We just wanted to make you aware of what we were doing. And we did talk to this, um, explain the, to the council a couple of weeks ago about the issue with John Deere. Um, okay. Any other questions on? Let's see, the fleet march, um, any committee reports, Tiffany?
Nope.
Uh, I have, I have just one, one question of the council. So, uh, if we are interested in doing the potential bonding, we, we have until Friday to let the, uh, manufacturer know if we're interested in the, the, uh, you know, the fire truck. So I guess I'm asking of the council is, uh, should we move ahead on the fire truck and then work out all the funding? Or, uh, you want to wait and, uh, and, uh, and potentially the price is going to go up 17,000? Or do we want to give that commitment, knowing that we're going to, we're going to get a fire truck, uh, you know? So I guess that's the question.
Bill, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, um, moving forward with supporting, uh, the fire, uh, truck. And I, everyone please, of course, contribute, but I, I, I think if we could just have some time to work out the financing or the funding, um, but I, I would be fine moving forward with that.
Fine with it also.
Agree. Yeah, agreed.
Agreed.
I agree. Okay. Then we, I think I heard, I think I heard agreements from every, every alderman, right? So thank you. And then we'll, uh, Tim, you heard that and you can, you can move forward with that.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Mayor, so, um, we don't have to wait a couple more weeks. You, you want to touch on the demo of the wellhouse? Briefly?
I wasn't, uh, I guess I wasn't prepared to talk about that tonight.
Okay.
But in short, uh, there's a old wellhouse that's down, it's on, uh, is it on our property, Bob, or where is it?
Down behind like Pines Nursing Home. Um, it's decommissioned wellhouse. It's been abandoned and broken into dozens of times. There's an old fence there, an old block building and some old water equipment. And we have well sites all around town. They're decommissioned. So we're, we'd like to just kind of get rid of it. And, uh, also something we have to go down to if it gets broken into and just kind of take it off the map and.
We would be doing, the work would be done in-house. We just want to, we would just, uh, like the council where, what, what's, what we're doing. We did run it by Jack Hart. He doesn't seem to be with it. Uh, it's decommissioned. It's not being used. It's, uh, it's slightly, it's being, like Bob said, it's being broke into. And, uh, so we would like to just eliminate it and, and, uh, go from there. So.
Okay. Anybody object to doing that? If we're doing it in-house.
With a sledgehammer and, and take a piece of it.
Everybody okay with that?
I was gonna, I was gonna say back on the fire truck, uh, as long as we each can get a ride and put the siren on or something to ride around in it.
I don't know if they put bells on them anymore or not, but you could ring the bell too, I guess.
You never know.
This is true. Okay. And so I think we've covered a lot tonight. So I'll take a motion to adjourn before we spend any more money. Dave, somebody want a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Okay, guys, have a good week.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Thank you.